Good evening. The regular city council meeting of August 17, 2017 is called to order at 7:32. Madam Clerk, the pledge please.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilman Baudier.
Present.
Councilman Benton.
Present.
Councilman Hewitt.
Present.
Councilman Johnston.
Present.
Councilman Wheeler.
Present.
Mayor Misselli.
Present.
Police Chief Walker.
Here.
Fire Chief St. Seer.
Present.
City Attorney Beiris.
Present.
City CPA Linda Lulu.
Present.
And Municipal Clerk Nicole Lee.
Present.
I'd like to acknowledge the events of today in Barcelona and have a moment of reflection for the victims in Barcelona. And also, one of our beloved longtime residents of Harahan, Ms. Penny Porino, has passed away recently. Ms. Penny served this city on the Planning and Zoning Board. She was a frequent person who came to our council meetings. She loved and adored this city. So in light of those two events, her passing and the events in Barcelona, I do ask for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Ms. Wheeler, I believe you'd like to amend the agenda to add a resolution and ordinance.
Yeah.
I have asked the city clerk to make copies available for everyone. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to add the Resolution 2017-19 addressing severe weather, March 11, 2016?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Baudier. All in favor to amend the agenda?
Yay.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Agenda is amended.
Where would you like to put it?
We are going to place that under Resolutions, not the second resolution. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to add proposed ordinance 2017-27 amending and establishing a personnel policy regarding compensation during periods of leave due to emergencies?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Wheeler, seconded by
Second.
Councilman Baudier. All in a favor to amend the agenda?
Yay.
Any opposed?
We have five yays, zero nays. We'll put this as the last new proposed ordinances under
First reading.
For first reading. Thank you. Special presentation. Darlene Schwartz.
Oh, first up, benefit that's coming up for Steve Nucio's widow is going to be on August 27. And quite honestly, I think that's a Sunday, but I'm not entirely sure. It's a...where is this going to take place at? Come on, Darlene.
This is in the Lions Club.
The Lions Club? Okay, the Lions Club. It's going to take place at the Lions Club. And anybody that knows Nick Nucio, it's Nick Nucio's brother. And it is a Sunday. Thank you. Okay. And thank you, Nicole. So, Sunday, August 27, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. It's a $10 donation at the door. And of course, they're going to have free food and beverages. If you want adult beverages, tiny fee involved. They're in the process of getting all that squared away with the chief and the council, I think, tonight if I'm not mistaken. They had a lot, a lot of medical bills, humongous medical bills. It's going to be a nice, a nice event once again for everybody to kind of pitch in and help. There'll be raffles, door prizes, et cetera. So please try Sunday, August 27, 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Try to swing by. Doors will open at 12:30 in the afternoon. We all love to eat and drink, so what the heck, right? Also, we've got coming up, couple of events in October. And everybody's going to sit there and roll their eyes about October. Well, we're in August. We've got one more council meeting in September. And then, I don't think we will be able to get the word out in time for this to be on TV for October. So here we are. We have got National Prescription Drug Takeback Day coming up. It's a twice-a-year event. Saturday, October 28. This event will once again take place. I don't expect we're going to do what we did the last time with over 700 pounds of pills and stuff. But I don't care if it's seven pounds. That's still a lot of product to take away from potentially kids and pets and going down where it doesn't need to go. So, again, Saturday, October 28. And that usually runs from 10:00 in the morning to 2:00 in the afternoon. We'll talk about that more next month. Night Out Against Crom. You know, we have a big event over at St. Rita, October 17. That's a Tuesday. So kind of make plans to come on by. And if you can't make it by, turn on the porch light to show your efforts in fighting Crom, being against that type of activity. And so that's kind of the brief on those. Tonight, I've got a little award thing the mayor wanted to do to recognize some people. We talked last month about the Royal Land Park kind of facelift. And Councilman Wheeler was there also, along with the mayor, we talked about. And we have two representatives tonight from NOLA serve that we would like to recognize for their efforts. Again, they had about 40 of their church members show up. And they did, we got a few before and after pictures of Royal Land Park. And, you know, when you get a minute, if they take a break here or something, I don't know, but take a look at them on your way out. They did a phenomenal job. It was hot. It was humid. It was disgusting out there. And they did a great job. So, that being said, the pastors were not able to come tonight, Monty and Olga Young, but we do have an award for them. And we'll give those to Mr. Michael and Christine by Monday. So if you guys could come up here, these are the people here that organized this event. Carrie and Tina, if you guys could come up and present this award to these lovely people. And basically, it says, "In recognition of your tireless efforts to make Harahan a better community, we're truly grateful for the positive impact you have made on our citizens." Mayor Misselli, tonight's meeting date, August 17, 2017. So, thank you all very much. And come on up. Take a picture. Come on up. Come on up. Step right up. We're kind to our business.
I'm like the short one.
Harahan to help us out in similar-type projects. And we'll be working with them to get some stuff scheduled.
I'd like to additionally say a heartfelt thank you on behalf of the city. It was such a worthy cause. It was very spiritually uplifting. Can't thank you enough. The neighborhood was watching on their porches. It meant a lot. So, again, thank you.
And last but not least, I know the mayor already recognized Ms. Penny. Knew Ms. Penny a long time. She didn't always take advice. She was opinionated. She was a lot of things. But she was really, deep down, loved by all and will be missed. Her presence here, you know, every, every council meeting, agree, disagree, she will be missed. She was okay. She lived a long time, went through a lot of things, saw a lot of things a lot of us will never get to experience. So, here's to you, Ms. Penny. That's it, guys.
Thank you, darling. Police Chief? Chief Walker?
Is my water open?
Evening, Mayor. Council viewing audience. Back again, I guess regarding the continuing saga about the audit and our funding for 2016. I'd like to start, I understand council members Wheeler and Baudier met with the auditors this past week. Would you like to comment on what you learned at that time?
The only problem with commenting on it, Chief, is that the mayor is just going to say, well, she doesn't listen to secondhand information anyway. But, see, the only problem with commenting is that the mayor will just dismiss what we have to say because she says she just doesn't listen to secondhand information. However, the audit was, I mean, I guess, I'm going to try to explain it the way Mr. Philip Rebo explained it. And he said that it was like taking a jigsaw puzzle that was missing some pieces and throwing it up in the air and trying to figure it out. And I mean, that was the best, the best way to describe it.
Yeah, what he had said was, when Councilman Baudier and I originally met with him, I believe it was on July 14, after the audit was submitted to the city, and when we reviewed the numbers, realized that some of them were inaccurate, I believe he reached out to the clerk and asked for all kind of documentation pertaining to anything with the 2016 budget amendments, whether it was via ordinance or resolution. He then kind of put together kind of a proposed amendment to the audit, which drastically reflected, for instance, your department, that the audit said that you overspent 66. Now has you underspent 91. It's $150,000 difference. And there's still some figures that he still can't account for because, like he said, it was like taking the pieces, throwing up in the air. Now some pieces are missing, some pieces don't fit. So I asked him, I said, well, what can we do to get this corrected? And he said, there's a lot of work that's going to have to be done, maybe reviewing some videos of the meetings, maybe going back and reviewing the minutes of the meetings to see exactly what was done, to what was adopted, to what was submitted. He said he had no problem in amending it, but before he would put his name on it, he wanted 100% that these figures were the accurate figures. So he's not opposed to amending it. But before he does, I think what was given to him now, he's having to start anew.
Correct me if I'm wrong. For example, we, the Harahan Police Department, received money from the parish, I think it was $90,000 for police cars last year. And city finance director requested that it be transferred by resolution. And because our budget is done by ordinance, that money was not transferred into our account. Now, my appreciation of it is when we bought the cars and spent the $90,000, the $90,000 expenditure came out the police department budget, but the $90,000 that was given to the city for the police department was not put into the police department's budget. Is that a fair statement?
And that is correct. He brought up, he showed us a paragraph in the Larson Act that says that all money received must be done via ordinance. So, my understanding of it, he asked Councilman Baudier and I, and we're going to have to work on it, is going back and all of the funds, including any funds that we have received via resolution for 2017, we're going to have to go back and adopt them via an ordinance. Because he said you cannot receive money, the law states it must be received via ordinance.
So that's where part of my money, I say my money, you correct it. That's where part of the police department's funding went last year. We paid for the new cars out of our operating budget, but the money that was donated to the city for the police department for the cars, the mayor kept in her budget. Do you all follow me? Something's wrong with this picture. And that's just part of it.
He was saying we should not have adopted any money or accepted any money via resolution. It had to be done via ordinance. He said that's what the law stated.
The $90-ish thousand for the police cars was adopted to the capital project budget. And it was paid for out of the capital project. It was not touched to the general fund.
So a lot is incorrect with that thing.
It's not on the general fund. It's on the...
But the money that came in?
Went to capital project fund.
From the parish? And did we accept that via resolution?
I don't know.
Yeah, so I can bring it. It's done with.
But that still didn't affect his 66 or 91 or anything else, but...
Well, that could be one to say, he said it was quite a few. And he also suggested that we start looking into 2017 so we don't have this problem in 2018.
Well, I still want to correct 2016 because we lost probably close to $220,000 out of the police department budget last year. That's about 10% of our budget. We've scaled back. Our police officers that protect you have to do without because the money was basically stolen from the police department.
Well, Chief, I'm going to break the bad news on you, Chief.
Pardon?
Can't fix 2016. We can justify it, but you can't fix it.
He said we can amend the audit to show that you were not overspent.
Well, this, these numbers have changed. It started off, the first time we get a financial statement in 2016 was in April of 2016. That only went, I'm sorry, October of 2016, that only went through April of 16. So it's kind of hard to know where you are financially if you don't know what your balance is in your account. The mayor believes any money that's left in your account after December 31 goes into the general fund, if not. So the next time we got a financial statement was March of 2017 and went through November of last year. If you go back a few council meetings, I brought up the fact that when we received the paperwork from Ms. Lulu, our city finance director, the police department had $507,000 in our account going into December 1. Impossible. That's one quarter of the department's budget. The mayor and Ms. Lulu shocked. That can't be. Can you prove it? Well, I brought the documentation. And oh, yeah, that is correct. So, back then, we were between money that was owed us from grant reimbursement. We get money from the state for highway safety, traffic enforcement. We work it, the overtime, we pay for it out of the police department budget. At the end of the grant period, we submit the documentation to the government entity, and we reimburse. That money didn't come back to the police department where it should have been none. We get money from the federal government sometimes to buy equipment and supplies. Same thing. Police department pays for it out of the operating budget. We submit the documentation. We get reimbursed. The money's supposed to come back into the police department budget. It was $82,000 last year. Didn't come back to our budget. Went to the city general fund. Then at that point, we realized we were $161,490 under budget. And this council was gracious enough to address it and try to give the money back to us. Then the mayor said to me, oh, there's a problem with the paperwork, the way the ordinance is written. So I took it for a word. I wrote it out in plain English, a two-year-old could understood. The money's coming from 2016, operating police department budget, going into 2017, police department capital account. Okay, everybody agreed. When they brought the ordinance up for introduction a couple of months ago, they come to find out it was coming out of the city's capital account, which is not what was agreed upon. Then the audit comes out. We believe we 161,000 under budget. And when the council members go to see Carl Riggs and Ingram, our city auditor, they say we're 66,000. I called one of the auditors the next day. He said, oh, we use the figures the city gave us. Well, the figures they should have been given was our city budget ordinance. Everything is done by law by ordinance. So that should have been what was given to the auditor. But apparently, it wasn't. They sent me a copy of the audit. The following week, my secretary, Ms. Wheeler, myself, we went through it. Documentation, we sent to Carl Riggs and Ingram and also to Ms. Lulu. Day later, oh, the police department's 91,927 under budget. The day after that, Ms. Lulu comes back and says, no, you're $75,621. Our budget from last year has changed as much as the temperature in one day. It's ridiculous. Went back and did a further investigation and documented with ordinances, emails from Ms. Lulu, our city finance director, that we $219,000 in 2016 prove us wrong. Nobody will do it. Nobody will answer the questions. I've asked you all before, you all really ought to consider getting a forensic audit to come in and look at what's going on with these books and something in the right. Then to knock it all off, Ms. Lulu, you paid the auditor, they charged me for conversations that we've had with them, the police department, to add insult to injury, $8,000. I sign off on all expenditures for the police department. Who gave you permission, Ms. Linda Lulu, to pay that $8,000 out of the police department account to CRI?
I don't cut the checks. I just code where they need to go. And considering the costs were incurred because of all of your emails and phone conversations about your department, it's your department's...
Did I sign off on it?
You don't have to sign off on it if it's for your department.
Wait, wait. Any other bill, any other statement we send to City Hall for payment, if I'm not, if I haven't signed off on it, they won't pay it. And then you can tell me now, if we send it over and I don't sign it, you're going to pay it.
Because you receive those other kinds of things. You buy, I don't know, car seats.
How do you know what I received? I wasn't going to pay that bill. And you don't have the authority to take that money out of the police department account and pay a bill on it.
Last month, we went over this skill, didn't we? That the mayor's office does have the authority to code things to other departments besides hers.
I don't pretend to be an expert on budgetary process because I am not an accountant. But I think what's at issue here are two different concepts. It's true, Chief, that you have to, I really don't know whether you sign checks or not.
I don't sign checks. I sign off on all purchase orders and bills that come in.
So, you know, look, this is a matter of accounting practice. And I did talk to Mr. Rebo concerning this. He called me up about this very question, about whether an ordinance has to be in place in order to receive money on behalf of the city. We had a conversation about that. I left the conversation with a slightly different understanding than what you're saying. I said, you know, so far as I know, as a matter of law, any money received by the city goes into the general fund unless it is specifically dedicated to a certain purpose. It all goes, that's where, that's the pot it goes into. And when it comes out as a matter of accounting practice, you fictitiously attribute the cost center to, you know, where the money's going. Like the money, this was money spent on behalf of the police department. That's how it's coded. The mayor signs the checks. I mean, that's...
But I authorize what money is spent from the police department.
Chief, it's just a matter of budgetary practice. And as long as I've been around municipal governments, it's an accepted practice that you take a cost center and you attribute the expenditure to the cost center.
Well, I want to contest what was charged. So I didn't want it paid, and they paid it without my permission, and it's wrong. It's incorrect.
And if that's a matter of budgetary practice, I think that gets to be taken up with the city council as to how the appropriations were made.
I think all the chief's trying to say is, what's the standard? So be consistent. If I do it nine times this way, the 10th time, I should do it the same way, right? So if I have to prove all expenditures that are paid out of the police department, and I have to sign up to say, yes, this is true, yes, the police department received it, why the 10th time to pay CRI would I not have to approve it? That's it. Consistency.
And that, you know, that is a matter of what your budgetary practices are. And like I said, I'm not an accountant. I have a lot of trouble understanding balance sheets. So the concepts are kind of alien to me. But as long as I've been around governments, they've always said, okay, we appropriated X,000 dollars to the police department. And as the year goes on, and you're doing your, you know, you're buying your paper and you're paying for the Xerox machine, they, the accountant sits there and says, okay, this was for the police department's Xerox machine. We're taking it fictitiously out of that budgetary appropriation.
Yeah, I think we all get how to do that with cost centers and appropriate the money.
But wouldn't you think it'd be just a best practices act that the department should approve what's coming out of it? Like, I mean, this, other POs he has signed off on have been paid. This one was paid without his authorization. So it makes this the exception.
Yeah, I don't know if that's required as a matter of law, but yeah, it's a piece of practice.
What lawsuits have you paid the police department?
Whenever they've happened. It hasn't been one recently.
Has it been one since you've been here?
Seems like we've paid something.
A lawsuit for the police department?
That's been paid since I've been here.
Well, and I'm just going to put this to you so you know, because this is coming to a head like in the next two weeks. There's a traffic accident that involved a Harahan police officer. The matter is set for trial in September. The city's excess carrier has been called in because the settlement amount is probably going to be in six figures. But the city's self-insured retainage is $50,000 bucks. So I have kept separate billing, separate billing records for the work I devote to that particular case because that burns up the city's self-insured retainage of $50,000. So when the insurance company says, we're going to settle the case, City of Harahan, put up your 50 grand. You know, my response to that is going to be, well, they've already paid me $25,000 to handle the case, so we're only putting up 25. That cost should be attributed to the department that incurred the liability. I mean, it's a police department case.
I just think it should be the norm that everybody should sign off before it goes out. It's just the checks that are...
And it has been. I'm not certain that as a matter of law, any, any subunit of the city has the authority to demand, even the elected police chief has the authority to demand, I have to sign off on all checks that go out for the police department. I don't, I don't want to go, I don't want to step out of line here. I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. I do know the Almarco cases out there about, you know, once you appropriate it to him, he gets to dispose of it as he will. But I'm not sure that as a matter of law, he's the guy who has to sign the check. I think the checks all have to be signed off by the mayor.
I'm not saying I sign a check. I approve all expenditures that are police department.
Yeah, and, and...
For example, if you didn't...
And for example, the question I have for you, and this traffic accident case in particular, you know, you get to approve all expenditures, but I'm the city's legal officer. So as I'm incurring the, you know, the city's incurring the obligation to pay the money for the work.
I understand.
Yeah, the cost center is really your cost center.
But something like this, the legal fees, the lawsuit, auditing fees, it goes to different departments. And that gets pulled by the auditors, part of their testing, and they see, oh gee, this clearly says court, regulatory, police. But I put it all to admin. They move it out after the fact. So my job is to make sure that everybody is in the right pots to begin with so that they don't have to move so much.
Everybody passing a buck as usual. One last thing, as I mentioned last month, 103 pages, heck of a lot of narrative, especially compared to the last five budgets, I mean audits. What did you all learn about the narratives that are in here? Because some of the narratives praise some employees and elected officials, and they kind of downgrade employees in other departments, which I don't think is right.
I asked, I asked Mr. Rebo, and at that time Becky Hammond actually came in our meeting too. And we flipped back to the pages, and I was a little concerned how some findings specifically gave a recommendation of how to resolve them, and some literally were written to almost bash four council members and praise one. I found out that anything above the finding that says corrective action plan was provided directly to Carl Riggs and Ingram from either the mayor or Linda Lulu. Verbatim, all they did was copy and paste it from emails that was provided to them, and they put it in the audit.
And they put it in the audit?
Yes, sir.
Never been done before around here that I've seen.
Anything that says corrective auction, action plan, any paragraph below that was verbatim. He said in emails that were sent to them, they just copied and pasted.
103 pages, and it praises certain individuals and city government and makes some nasty remarks about other employees.
Yes.
Not very nice.
In the audit?
In the audit, yes, ma'am.
In the audit, yes.
We went there, we were very upset about the corrective action plans. And we were like, who are y'all and what gives you the right to write this?
We started blaming them because we thought they wrote it.
Right. And Mr. Rebo informed us, he said, wait a minute, let me, let's straighten this up right now and change the tempo of this meeting. This information was given us directly, and by law, we cannot change a single word of it. Even if they put down Carl Riggs and Ingram and call them the worst out, they still cannot change it no matter what. It has to be in that audit report, and is illegal to change. Because like you, we were hostile. We were like, all right, look, what's going on here? I thought you were independent auditing firm that was supposed to give us a biased opinion of what you thought where we were at financially. And then that's what they told us, that they were not...
Far from being independent, trust me.
Yeah.
So where do we go? I just, the Harahan Police Department moved us $220,000 last year, and it's just no big deal. Is that it?
Well, the way the meeting ended was basically, like Councilman Baudier said, is the ending balance, I believe, was 25,000 or something. He said he would go back if we gave him 100% proof, evidence that these figures, so, and he would file an amendment. So when it goes to the auditors, nobody sees that you overspent your department by 66, you actually underspent 91. The fire department, for instance, their auditing came that they were over 18. If this is amended, they're under a hundred and one.
So, are we requesting for them to redo the audit?
He said he would. He said he would amend that one page. Unfortunately, it doesn't change the ending balance.
Doesn't change anything.
But, basically, you know, it doesn't show that the chief oversp, that either chiefs overspent when they really were under. The problem is, is that everything that's been provided to them initially from the figures from the city, to when we met, to what Nicole provided to him, like he said, it's just taking a puzzle, throwing the pieces up in the air, seeing where they fall. Now, some pieces are missing, some don't fit. So, if he can, if we can, it's gonna take a lot of work to do it. He said he's willing to amend it, but he wants a hundred percent that this is the final figures, and he would amend it. But it doesn't overall amend the bottom line. But it does reflect the budgets correctly that y'all were not overspent. And there was other departments, I think recreation was under, now they would be over. I think one department stayed the same. But the two biggest ones, like for instance, General Governmental, which I guess is the administration, the prior audit or the audit that stands now says it was under five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, which I don't know how you can operate a budget and be under half a billion dollars. With this proposed amendment, it's now over a hundred and thirteen thousand.
So, the truth is, is that we were in a deficit in sixteen. We were not a positive twenty-five thousand. So, the truth be told...
I have two emails from Ms. Lulu, one on July, I'm sorry, one on four-eleven-seventeen, April eleventh, that you sent to me saying we were seventy-nine thousand, four-oh-eight under budget, meaning the police department for two thousand and sixteen. On July twenty-first nineteen, I'm sorry, two thousand and seventeen, you said the police department was seventy-five thousand dollars, seventy-five, six-hundred-and-twenty-one under budget for sixteen. Do you remember those two? And you also said in comments, one of them, as you always said, we were about seventy-five thousand under budget for two thousand and sixteen. Is that correct? Pardon?
Yes, those were my emails, and the difference between the two is a sixteen-ish thousand-dollar capital expenditures of your computers, because the auditors take capital expenditures out of the office supplies or computer or wherever, and it pulls it out. But that was still your line item, you still spent it, so that's the difference between...
No, one you said we were seventy-nine under, and the other one you said we were seventy-five. There's four thousand dollars difference. But we still under budget for sixteen, correct? You do the books, how much did you bill the city for two thousand and sixteen? Do you know?
No, I do not remember every single thing.
Over a hundred and thirty thousand? Is that a safe assumption? Yep, that is. Hundred and thirty, hundred and forty thousand dollars, we paid for, no, chief nothing, we paid for accounting services. This is my tax dollars too, ma'am. We paid over a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars for accounting services, and I can't get an answer. But we lose two-hundred-and-twenty thou, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars under the police budget, and it's, oh, no big deal. Don't say anything. This is ridiculous. It's hard to run a department when you know where you have financial, and you... Well, you know, you've criticized that I haven't contained or maintained law and order in this council chambers, and you're the worst, worst one that interrupts when people speak. You do it all the time. You do it, like I said before, to try and break people's chain of thought, so you can take control. You always do it. Just like everything is done by design, but this audit, the way the financials, we don't get financials on a regular basis, so you can hide the money, come the end of the year, you think you can capture it.
I have a quick question, Ms. Lulu. And I'm not sure if you're the one to answer this, or if it's CRI, but who makes the recommendation, or if it's not the council, that the audit is redone based on approved ordinances and by the law of what the budget was approved to be and all amendments? I mean, if the numbers aren't correct, but the imbalance is, okay, we all agree, but each department is not coming out to be correct because we didn't use our approved budget ordinances. Who makes the recommendation that this audit is not, I mean, it's not even, it's not official for twenty sixteen? It's not real. So, why would we file that away in our books, that twenty sixteen is closed like this, when it's wrong?
Well, my understanding is, from, you know, years of being an accountant, is once it's published on the legislative auditor's website, it's done.
It's published.
It got published this week. So, as far as I know, it is out of our hands. I mean, you seem like you've talked to him, and you know something else.
And I asked him, I said, how could you publish this audit?
I do not know.
I asked him, I said, how could you have published this audit knowing that these figures were inaccurate? I asked him what, Councilman Baudier, and that's what he said, I will amend it. I even asked him, why did you publish it knowing? But here was the thing, it appears it was already published before we even got to him. Y'all were giving it to him on June thirtieth. When we met him on July fourteenth, my understanding, it already went to the auditors. Then when it was discovered that the figures weren't accurate, and I think that's the argument, is why wasn't the numbers originally provided to him that were by the ordinances and the resolutions? He said it was given to him, he had like a stack of emails that he said came from you, that provided him with the figures. Well, I didn't understand why he just didn't go and pull the ordinances that we adopted. That's where he should have started from. So, he's definitely held accountable that this audit is inaccurate, in my opinion, and he's prepared to fix it. The problem is, is that what was provided to him, he doesn't even know where to start. But we're gonna try to see if we can get at it.
That's fine.
So, you got a company, and this gentleman's been doing this for forty years, forty years, and he can't figure it out. So, what he's telling us now is that we need to go figure it out, to give him the numbers, because he can't figure it out, so he can fix it.
So, he'd fix it for free?
Not for free, oh, no. There's no doubt.
I got George's eight thousand dollars for asking questions and sending literature in, information in. And like I said, this budget for the police department in sixteen has gone up and down, up and down, like a roller coaster. And the last email I sent was with documentation that we two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand under budget for last year, and I asked somebody to verify it or prove us wrong, and nobody's responded. But we get a bill for eight thousand dollars. And by the way, this is all for the record. You know, this is sad. You know, you got a city that's struggling, the whole budget for the city's a little over six million dollars, and then you take ten percent of the police department budget from last year and steal it from us? So, I'll cut back on services that we provide to you, I'll cut back on equipment and supplies for the policemen.
Chief, can I take it one step further? What I thought, and you asked us, how does we feel, and I'm gonna tell you how I feel personally, because I'd like it to be known, is that, you know, you and I, we haven't always agreed on everything, and, but one thing we do agree on is that we have something special here. And that we have a good, small, we have a small-town community here. And I'm watching you leave offices and droves, you know, because nobody wants to make the little bit of money that they're making here, and always in life, and though I've never even been a police officer, but the way I define a small-town community or bedroom community, as you will, is that police officer starts and finishes his career there, to where my child can run to and not run from him. And under this administration, I just don't know how you do it. I don't know how these police officers do it. And I gotta tell you, even though it's sickening, and I don't, we don't know what to do, because we're asking a company that's been doing this for forty years, and they don't know what to do. And the only thing I can do is, I can apologize to all of these police officers that deserve so much more.
And fired too.
And fired too.
All city employees.
Yeah.
But all that comes back, it goes back to the mayor's legacy. I got the city out of debt. That's what it's all about. I got you out of debt, my legacy. There's not gonna be a library or a bronze statue for me, I'm a seller when she leaves office, trust me. It's sad, it really is sad, folks. And when I spoke to the auditor, first time after I was contacted by council members, Baudier and Wheeler, and I talked to the auditor, we used the figures the city gave us. The only things they needed to give them is the actual ordinance. There's checks and balances in the system. This council is responsible for the balanced budget. This council sets the budget by ordinance. That's what should have been submitted to the auditors, that we paid thirty-two, well, probably better than forty thousand now, for the audit. And it's incorrect, because they got the wrong figures to begin with.
You are correct.
Because afterwards, I understand y'all, the auditors started going back, contacted City Hall, oh, we want copies of the auditors. The budget can be changed by this council, by ordinance. So, after it was done, and the complaints were made that I made, and I guess some other people made, they came back to City Hall, oh, send us these budget amendments now, these ordinances that have changed, so now we can do the books correctly, which hadn't been done. And like I said, this audit has changed like the temperature in a day. I went from one sixty-one under, sixty-six over, ninety-something under, then seventy-five under, now back sixty-six over, and we believe we got beat out of two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand and some change, with documentation we sent everybody, nobody replied to it. Did you look at what we sent you, Ms. Lulu? Did you check what we sent?
I looked at it, and I think it's funny, every reiteration you say about your numbers is completely changes. But you have budgeted numbers in there, you say to include, that are already included. You are adding grant revenues and other revenues that you do not include into the expense line items, and...
Why didn't you reply to my email? I said, if there's something wrong, please reply. Because you had no problem replying when the audit came to us, and we put the documentation out, and the auditor that came back said, you're ninety-one thousand, nine-twenty-seven under budget, and the following day, you sent out, said, no, you say seventy-five thousand under budget. Which you knew all along, but that's not what was sent to the auditor.
One, you don't know what was sent to the auditor. I sent them the ordinances and all of the amendments and resolutions that went to the ordinance. That's one of the very first things that I put in the drop box for them. But you have told everybody through various emails repeatedly that you're unhappy. Everybody knows that you're unhappy. And we are being investigated now by the state board, so I'm not going to comment any further here.
Being investigated by who?
The state board.
Well, I filed a complaint with the Louisiana Licensing Board, CPAs, against Ms. Lulu and one of the auditors, that's why. And that's why we're getting stuck with a sixty-six thousand dollar overage, because everybody's unhappy with the complaint I made. But how do we spend city money, forty thousand plus for an audit, and it's incorrect? So, I'll go back, so we just out two-hundred-and-something thousand dollars?
I know, we will try to do everything we possibly can. He, like I said, he's basically putting it back in our hands to try to find where the error is. Whether it's through watching meetings played over again, or reviewing the minutes. That's what he told us. So, basically, we're gonna have to find it for him.
Would a forensic auditor be better coming in and doing it from scratch? That's somebody that's not...
Could be something worth considering.
You know, not obligated to anybody, come in with fresh, fresh eyes and look at it? It's all in black and white, it's all done by ordinance. I don't understand. All right. Last one we brought up, during enrollment for health insurance, four city employees for the police department were paid health insurance premiums that are two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, five forty-nine, after they left the job. And apparently, somebody didn't pick up on it, but the employees, the former employees never got a paycheck, so they had to know that they weren't employed. Do we get that money back? Was that money reimbursed from the insurance company? You mentioned last month that it was coming.
I saw a small credit, it wasn't done. They said, we got two more months for everything to catch up. That catching up, plus the new rates coming in, so we've got like three months for it all.
Okay. That twenty-one thousand's come back to the police department?
Yes.
It is? Okay. And then, the financial that we ran a couple of months ago, that's through the end of June? It has on the end of August, but I assume it's the end of June? I'm sorry, end of July. We ran it a couple of days ago, that's...
Well, all the checks are in here that were cut through July.
I saw, I mean, it has on August.
I haven't done any...
But I mean, I'm trying to get an idea, what this is through. Was this through July?
That is through, what you ran off the system is through July, from what was cut or deposited by the front office. I have not reviewed July yet. I'm actually gonna start that next week. And then like the payroll and the liabilities and all that will be hit next week and two.
So, we still outstanding bills for the police department, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
It should only be in payroll, though.
Chief, did you ever get access, I know you mentioned several...
We have INCODE, we have a software package that the city pays for, to do the finances. And we've asked repeatedly, it's supposed to be transparent. Can we have access, read-only? We don't want to change any figures in the computer, just to look. We've got it for payroll, but that's all we've got. And you keep saying there's a problem, Mayor, that has ever been explored, that we can get read access on everything on city finances? Is that a problem?
We'll look into it, Chief.
But you tell me every month, every month, look into it. What seems to be the problem?
Chief, you want to pick and choose when I can and can't speak? I'll speak when I so choose, when you're finished.
Okay. And then...
I'll address all your concerns.
I have a question. So, wait, well, you're asking to see things beyond the police department?
It's all city, it's all public record. No?
Did you look at anybody else's department?
I don't look at my department.
That was probably not the best answer.
Well, let me tell you why. Some of the... I can answer that, Ms. Lulu. There were some things that happened, that if we'd have had access, we could have caught some of these mistakes that were made way back when and corrected them. That's why. It's all public record. Why, you know, we're supposed to be transparent, why can't we have access?
We have a very long agenda for city business.
And, it's just, when else are we gonna discuss it, Mayor? When else are we gonna discuss it?
Tim, I'd like to get on to special, on to address the council.
We will in a few minutes, when I finish.
How many more minutes? Because you take an hour plus out of every council meeting, and we have citizens here who are coming to speak about important things that concern them.
Well, I think getting beat out of two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand dollars is pretty important for the police department, and it rests the city government.
Can I just, can I make a request, please?
Why?
I'm sure, I'm sure everyone's thinking it, and I just have to say it. I don't, Mayor, please, and Ms. Lulu, I don't, I just don't quite understand, if we see the chief in such distress, and he's basically begging for information so he can manage the police department's budget appropriately, and time after time, and meeting after meeting, he pleads with you, as you say, for an hour, every meeting, he gets no answer, and he gets nowhere, and the next month, he does it again. So, what everyone, I'm sure, is thinking at home and here in the council chambers is, somebody do something about it. If you're transparent, and there's nothing to hide, share the information with the chief. Explain to him how to use INCODE. Show him his budget. Stop doing this month after month, and shaking your head, like, we'll just get to it when we get to it. Help the chief do his job. Give him the information he needs. Ms. Lulu, if part of your salary goes to the police department, go over there and meet with the chief, and explain to him what his questions are, give him the information that he needs, and help him so that he does not have to come here every meeting for an hour, and plead his case, and beg for information. Help him, be transparent, give the information.
Again, I've got, what, six, seven public records requests have been going back since May of this year that haven't been answered. But it was funny, last meeting, the mayor stated, well, Chief Walker, we found paperwork that when you were councilman under Mayor Mosca, you were offered health insurance. And I blurted out, it was two thousand and two. I went back and I checked. It was nineteen ninety-nine when I was on the council. So, no wonder I can't get public records requests answered, when the mayor spends all the time going back, checking things, nineteen ninety-nine, it's a little outdated. It just doesn't end, folks. All right. On another note, we had a couple more vehicle burglaries this past week. Please, lock your cars. It was the area between Colonial and Sedgfield. Three or four cars, they were all unlocked. They just go down the street, late at night or early in the morning, when it's dark. If they see a car coming, they don't know if it's a police car or not, and they duck behind the car. Nobody sees them, they go on, and they keep unlocking cars by pressing a button, open the car, and they find all kinds of valuables. Please, lock your cars. The second thing, I don't care what time of day or night it is, you see something suspicious, either call nine-one-one, or call a police station, we're coming. Call ten times a day, we're coming ten times a day. If they don't come, you call me, and I'll see why. But they, meaning the police officers, respond to every call this city receives, whether it's a walk-in at the station, a call to the station, a call to JPSO, nine-one-one. We have a couple, we have one suspect that was on a video from one of the people in the neighborhood. If you go on the Harahan Police Department Facebook page, you can view it, you might notice, the guy had a backpack, he's a young male, hat and a backpack, and it's three, four in the morning. So, again, people walk in the neighborhood, two, three in the morning, it's a little suspicious, call us, let us go check it out. That's what we get paid to do. We'd rather go check it out beforehand than you call later in the morning, oh, I saw the guy in the neighborhood, but my neighbor's car got broken into, and he lost his laptop, or his wife lost her purse, or some other valuable. Call us when you see something. As I said before, June thirtieth, our communications went out with Cox phone and the internet net. If you call a police station, seven-three-seven-nine-seven-six-three, and if it doesn't answer, and four, five rings, dial nine-one-one. Because we had a few problems with Cox lately, with the phones going out. Again, schools open, please drive carefully, and it's illegal to use your cell phone in the school zones. We've got three schools in Harahan, Harahan Elementary, Faith Lutheran, over on Colonial, and St. Rita. And, three of the months that I've got reports from the Jefferson Parish Sheriff's Office, our sales tax in April was additional ninety thousand compared to last year, May was eighty-seven thousand, almost eighty-eight thousand, and July was ninety-eight thousand. That's almost two-hundred-and-eighty thousand additional revenue compared to last year. Do you know if the early part of the year, January, February, and March, were the same, which caused it as almost a hundred percent increase in sales tax revenue?
Chief, you're not looking at the report entirely correct. We have two lines in that report from Jefferson Parish. One says operations, and one says bond. So if you add the two lines together, it's only a two percent change for one year, it's two thousand dollars, and the other one's three thousand dollars. And that's because we closed the bond, so it doesn't need to go over to the bond fund.
Okay. So that money's still coming in, though?
Yes.
Okay. And where's the money going?
To the general operating account.
Okay. And, Mayor, I asked you a couple of months ago, the red building next door, sixty-four, sixty-nine, the front office that the people vacated, you said you wanted to rent it out, haven't seen enough of sales on. We in need of some extra space, is any chance the police department could take it over?
We'll talk about it, and after the meeting, Chief, we can talk about it next week.
Okay. Thank you.
We will now...
Thank you, and God bless.
We will now address the council, and I'd like to be the first one to address the council, and not Tim Baudier or the chief, who use that as their infomercial. Yes, it's my turn to speak. Chief, you've made comment after comment, accusation after accusation. You have presented every accusation to every elected official across the state of Louisiana, to every organization. You have called for a forensic audit, you have doubted the numbers, you have questioned everything. I welcome any questions that any of these organizations, organizations to bring forth. Every single time you calculate what you were over, under budget, it changes like the wind. So you want to use the temperature, I'll use the wind. And, just, there is no more explaining the budget to you. We have tried to explain the budget, we have tried to explain the budget process to the council. Most of the problems that have come were from you not understanding the explanations of things that are given to you when you are told that revenues do not go against expenses, revenues go with revenues, expenses go with expenses. The council understanding how to pass budgets in timely manners. You want to talk about the ordinance that was promised in order to give you back money. It was so convoluted, everyone agreed, that there was no decent way that it could have been interpreted. So you want to blame me. So I vetoed it. So you didn't like the ordinance I had put up. But you know what? You have four council members who are willing to do anything, and you didn't ask them to write anything, you didn't go to Ms. Lulu and ask, and work with the council to write it so that it would work properly, be, to get your message across. So you always circumvent, and you, I, it's my address to the council. So, I welcome any, I welcome whatever the DA wants to say, whatever the attorney's office, anything that the auditor says, the legislative auditor, anyone who wants to bring numbers. Also, you say that the wrong numbers were supplied in the beginning of the audit, the budget was supplied, then they were resupplied, and then Nicole, the city clerk, supplied them again. And you know what? We didn't see any discrepancies. It was all the same budget numbers. Now, as far as the resolutions, there, I recall this quite brisk, quite clearly, thank you for the, the word. We have talked to Nicole. Nicole says, we always have accepted money from Jefferson Parish via resolution, one-hundred percent of the time, always. Ms. Lulu kept saying, well, we need an ordinance. But Nicole says, no, we need a resolution. The, by, end of the year budget that we put up, the amendment would have brought all lines into order, and all that money would have been moved appropriately. But you rejected it. You came out full force, oh, no, we're not gonna take that budget amendment, I'm only gonna, we don't want, don't touch the numbers, the council didn't want to bring the budget into line, like every other municipality in parish does. So, we are not gonna talk about the audit anymore. We have more important things to get on to with the city business, and we are gonna await any investigation to bring it forward, and we will answer all the questions. The other thing I want to tell you, you, you use more resources of our city government. We spend more time answering questions, the same questions, over and over and over again that you present, re-present, and then re-re-represent. Our staff is running around in circles to make, try and make you happy, and there's no making you happy. So, we have tried to educate you, we've tried to work with you, we've tried to make it clear, we've tried to educate and work with the council to get this budget rolling in the way it's supposed to be. I regret that it hasn't, and I regret that the budgets weren't passed on time, I regret that the budget at the end of the year isn't brought into line as the government accounting practices would dictate. But until this can start acting as a team, I bet it was difficult for Car Riggs and Ingram. I bet it was very difficult with the convoluted mess that this city has gone through with trying to pass budgets and do budget amendments appropriately. Because every single time that the budget was presented and tried to be dealt with, it was against professional advice, time and time again. Thank you. Address the council, anyone who would like to come.
Thank you. Tim Baudier, one-eighty-four Oakland. Just got a few statements I'd like to read. And first, I'd like to apologize for getting aggravated and losing my patience with Councilman Benton at the last council meeting. Councilman Benson said something that I thought I had not said, so I'd like to read a statement to clear the air. I would like to remind the citizens that Councilman Hewitt, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Wheeler, and Councilman Baudier stood up against Mayor Mocelli and Councilman Benton's radical increase in sewer fees. The four councilmen worked numerous hours searching for ways to cut these fees that the mayor, and the county leader Lulu, and Councilman Benton were strapping on the citizens of Harahan. I for one sure am happy that this council stood up for the people and did the right thing by our federal citizens. I implore you to take the blinders off. This is not the action of four hostile councilmen, but this is the action of four councilmen with honor and a willingness to stand strong against the mayor, Tina Mocelli's wrath and scrutiny. The reason for this statement was because after numerous hours spent on trying to find ways to cut the sewer fees in half and succeeding, Councilman Benton voted against it. So to be clear to the citizens, and to make no mistake about it, I am now saying Councilman Benton, by not voting for the ordinance to cut the fees in half, absolutely, one-hundred percent voted in favor of continuing the exorbitant fees that are being put on our residents, purposely knowing that the citizens that she represented were struggling and Over this past month, I've been getting a ton of emails about the smell coming from the sewer plant. And, so over the past month, I've gotten several polite emails about the smell from the water waste being dumped at the sewer plant. However, there's one particular email that I would like to address. I had explained to this particular citizen that the decision to dump the wastewater was made by the mayor and had nothing to do with the council. The lady then commented back to me, and she said, this is because the council chooses to not work with the mayor. I never really understood that, but the comment really got me upset, because again, this slander is, this slander is being spread about the council not willing to work with the mayor, and it could not be further from the truth. And this is an example. For example, we received the information packet or the agenda for this council meeting yesterday at four PM. This is done purely with intention of not allowing the council to time to prepare and truly understand city issues and business. I have served under two previous mayors, and we never got packets no later than the Friday before the council meeting. This is simply done by design, and the reason for the, and the reason the council meetings go on for four hours, costing you, the taxpayers, wasted dollars. Furthermore, the law, the law states that the council is required to have their packets or agendas by four PM Monday before the council meeting. It is in ordinance eighteen oh five, section four, and it reads, "The Harahan City, the Harahan City Council regular meeting agenda shall be printed and distributed to all council members no later than four-thirty PM, four-thirty PM, the Monday immediately preceding the regular monthly meeting. By supplying the council with the agenda a day before the meeting is not only incredibly disrespectful to this council, because we're hostile, and costly to the citizens by wasting taxpayer dollars by having the meetings go on all hours of night, but it's breaking the law. I am sure that any of us, if, and if any of us break the law, there will be consequences. I'm not sure how you guys feel, but as citizens, but as a citizen, I feel the mayor should be held accountable. The mayor needs to stop blaming the council for her shortcomings, misdeeds, and blatant disregard for the law, law, and own up to it. The citizens of Harahan should accept nothing less. I am not sure how many other instances of, of proof that I have to present to the citizens to show that this council has been at, has been, has your best interest in mind. And the real question is, is, does this mayor have your best interest in mind? Give you a little update of some things that's been going on in the city. Councilman Johnson, myself, former mayor Carlo Ferrera, and former councilman Eric Chatalane have been putting boots on the ground and spent some time viewing the drainage, ditches, and the crossovers under the highway, and expecting these ditches along the side of Jefferson Highway. And I'm here to report that State Representative Kirk Talbot and his assistant, Ms. Tia Russell, have been a great help to the citizens of Harahan. By having the DOTD come out and scoop these ditches, our next plan of attack is as soon as the DOT is done with the ditches, we're gonna start examining the crossovers and culverts to see which ones are clogged and with debris and debris and dirt. Once we have an assessment, we're gonna start taking a, we're gonna start finding some solutions. And let me explain to you that these ditches were cleaned at no cost to you, none. The, the state representative and his assistant came out, and they got it done through DOTD for free, for us. And we, this city owes Representative Talbot a great thank you." I have an updated report by Woods Material. She actually sent it to me, and I asked if I could read it, and this is what she says. She says, "It would be great if you could pass on the information to the residents at the next council meeting. We temporarily stopped phase one when the higher river came, which is what you have seen on our last visit to our site." I've been actually visiting the site regularly. "We have connected the road, concrete bay for the truck wash, plumbing and the electrical to complete phase one. We should receive the final drawings for the concrete bay for truck wash, for the truck wash this week or next. I will forward to you when I get the drawings from Lanier and Associates. Now that we have all our permits in place for phase two, and when the construction company returns in two weeks, we plan on finishing phase one. They will start the excavation to the hall road on, in phase two, and as weather has been quite unpredictable and a huge interruption for many of the construction jobs, it will be hard to give a firm completion date on the hall road too, but I'll keep you posted." I, I have had a chance to work with the citizens on Marquette, the street which was in bad disrepair and very dangerous. They said they had been asking for help from the city for about a year, and it was the craziest thing I've ever seen. It actually had a hole, and it made a ramp. Where the hole was, it made a ramp, so as the cars were hitting this ramp, it just a matter of time before they fly into these people's houses. The street was in bad disrepair and very dangerous. Marquette is one of the streets that the parents line up to pick up their kids, and the bus route that the buses used to drop off the kids at school. After asking for, to have the street repaired for a year, it was finally partially fixed, and this was a great start. The ramp of Blacktop was removed and alleviated, and alleviated some of the problems. And I am sure the citizens can't wait to get the rest finished. I have also been in contact with our school board representative, Melinda Doucette, and she has assured me that she will, that she will come out to take a look for alternate bus routes, to keep the bus routes in the parents' traffic off of the street. If you have any questions or concerns, there are, or anything that we can help with, we're here to help, please reach out to us. Despite what you may hear about a hostile council, it is not true. And I know for a fact, I'll, I'll even say all five of us are here to help you. And, and, and I just want you to always know that we're here to reach out. Please reach out. And then there's one last thing I'd like to go over. Terry Valenti decided today to blast me on Facebook. She has called me out on Facebook again without having all her facts straight. Terry Valenti is a hate reader, and I guess if whomever drinks Tina Mocelli's Kool-Aid, they will fall into the same frame of mind. I am out there trying to save taxpayers money and find solutions to what you get from, I'm trying to find solutions, and what you get from Terry Valenti and her shrinking audience are negative comments and attacks. The mayor encourages this type of behavior, and then hypocritically, hypocritically tells the citizens that she has a hostile, hostile council. Posts like Ms. Valenti's, that, like she puts on Facebook, which are usually wrong and almost always hateful, are exactly the way we got to the place that we are today, and it's really sad. This is exactly the example of what is wrong with our great city, and it is a shame, because I do believe she would have so much to offer as a solution finder instead of a troublemaker. However, Terry, when you are ready to move over from the dark side, I will gladly welcome your assistance and your views. And just for the record, what Terry Valenti posted on Facebook is that Mayor Mocelli single-handedly had the state come out and clean the ditches, and that I was gonna use this as a campaign plot. However, I brought copies for anyone to see of all my correspondence, back and forth with the state of having these ditches done. It didn't come in, I wasn't, it was never intended to promote, it was intended to help. But Terry Valenti wanted to make light of it, so I'm here to answer her question. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening to all members of the governing council of our fine city of Harahan, and good evening to all of my fellow citizens of Harahan. Here's a fun fact taken from the city's website. Harahan is nicknamed the city of friendship. I understand why, though. My name is Julie Kenny. I've grown, grown up here all of my life in the area, but I've only been an official resident of Harahan since January of 2015. My husband and I were delighted to purchase our first home in Harahan. We love the community, our street is quiet with very little traffic, we have the most amazing neighbors. This is one of them. One of my cats got out a few months back. I did everything I could to find him, post on Facebook, check the animal shelter, handed out flyers, after three very long days of losing my child, he was able to come back home due to the kindness of my neighbors. This is the type of community we live in, and we need to cherish it and preserve it. Yeah, we may have some issues that we disagree on, but what we seem to forget is how lucky we are to live in such a beautiful city. We are surrounded by great people that genuinely care about each other and look out for each other. I found out recently that pump station number eight is in serious danger of breaking. Is this true?
Yes.
I haven't been following the meetings, I apologize, it's very hard for me to watch them and to see everything that goes on on Facebook. To my knowledge, the pump station, if it breaks before we repair it, the entire city of Harahan could potentially be without sewage for four to seven days. Is that also true?
I was told three days.
Three days? Okay. We had problems on our street, I live on Franklin Avenue, and we had some sewage issues a couple months back. We saw raw sewage in our driveway, on the street, we saw toilet paper, used tampons, people were unable to flush their toilets, and some people even had raw sewage backing up in their homes. I don't want this to happen to the entire city of Harahan, so I'm here to request, maybe there's some solution we can find to repairing pump station number eight before it breaks. And I think I'm gonna stop there. Some of what you said echoes what I wanted to say. Maybe there's a way that we can work together more and stop fighting so much. I would love to see that for my city. I think that would be great.
Tracy Whittle, five-oh-eight Gordon Avenue. I just wanted to clarify something in reference to the ordinance that we had put up at the end of, at the beginning of this year to move some of the funds. I stood up here at a meeting, and it was the same meeting that Mayor Mocelli questioned my intelligence and my background to even speak about the budget. And I begged and asked for help with that ordinance. We've amended ordinances before, is that right? We could have amended that ordinance to read correctly, because after the meeting was over, it was just, it was very simple. So that's not incorrect. We do ask for help, and we don't get help.
So John Ream, three Rentpass. We received an email on August fifteenth, twenty-seventeen, from East Jefferson Levy District, Derek Bozey, the chief administrative officer, in reply to our email concerning Wood Materials permit on a new hall road along the river and retiring the old hall road. And Derek Bozey wrote to us, the Corps of Engineers issued its letter of no objection on July the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen. The Coastal Protection and Restoration Authority issued a letter of no objection on August the first, twenty-seventeen, and the East Jefferson Levy District issued their permit on August the first, twenty-seventeen. All required... And Derek Bozey wrote to us, "The Corps of Engineers issued its letter of no objection on July 26, 2017. The Coastal Protection and Restoration Authority issued a letter of no objection on August 1, 2017, and the East Jefferson Levy District issued their permit on August 1, 2017. All required permits and letters of no objection were issued by August 1, 2017 to Wood Materials to run that hall road. The Harahan residents and community are happy about the permits being approved. Constructing a new hall road along the river will move the existing hall road away from the Harahan residents and community. Retiring old hall road parallel and behind the levee and planting grass will eliminate hall road noise, vibrations to houses, and airborne sand from entering the Harahan residential community. Placing berms and tree curtains higher than the levee across all openings from Hickory Avenue to Bailey Street will create tree curtain to eliminate airborne sand from entering the Harahan residential community. These changes will create what is already in place from Bailey Street to Harleen Street. Harahan residents and community have suffered for a very long time from Wood Materials' airborne sand and are looking forward to these changes and hope work will begin soon. And we thank Councilman Tim Baudier for talking to Pierce Wood and Stacy Trumbull and for communicating with them, and we hope Sarah Woodham will join in also, and I think she pulls a lot of weight with that company. So they are doing better, and we look forward to working with them on getting this job done. Thank you.
Evelyn Ream, 3 Rentpass. Wood Materials' illegal compost mulching tree dumping located on the bachelor in Harahan was not made known to the Harahan residential community through a sign on the levee, a meeting, or in the newspaper to announce it was coming to the Harahan bachelor. But Wood Materials moved it on the Harahan bachelor behind the trees, behind the levee, out of public view. Wood Materials knew before bringing compost mulching and tree dumping on the bachelor in Harahan that it is not a permitted use on the Harahan bachelor and law in six states no manufacturing shall be done on site. Wood Materials should not have filed a lawsuit against the city of Harahan for the city citing the company for illegally compost mulching and tree dumping on the Harahan bachelor. People don't sue the police for giving them a ticket for speeding and breaking the law. Wood Materials Services Incorporated sued the city of Harahan and the Board of Commissioners for the East Jefferson Levy District on October 28, 1988. The city of Harahan and the Commissioners for East Jefferson Levy District won in the U.S. Court of Appeals for the 5th District. Wood Materials should be a good neighbor and should withdraw their lawsuit against the city and move the mulching, compost, and tree dumping back to the Jefferson Parish side of the bachelor where it started and is legal because it is zone M2 industrial and will be able to sell their compost and mulching on the bachelor in Jefferson Parish. If they do, the newspaper may say, "Wood Materials becomes a good neighbor, drops a lawsuit against the city, and moves their compost mulching tree dumping off the Harahan bachelor." If they don't, the newspaper may say, "Wood Materials lost their fight against the Harahan neighbors and was ordered by a judge to move the compost mulching tree dumping facility off the Harahan bachelor and pay fines to the city." December 7, 2016, Wood Materials versus the city of Harahan temporary injunction did not change the law. It just allowed Wood Materials to continue until the next court date, which is on September 6, 2017, at 1:00 p.m. at Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals at 101 Derby Street in Gretna, courtroom B, and will be an oral argument. John and I, as representatives of the residents of Harahan, will be at court to represent the Harahan residential community. If anyone can take a day off of work and join us, you can meet us there. But if you can't, we represent you. We will not be able to speak because this is a courtroom order, oral argument. It is a shame for Wood Materials to hire attorneys to try to keep this illegal activity on the bachelor in Harahan, which ruins the Harahan residents' quality of life.
Motion for three more minutes.
Not much.
I have a motion for three more minutes.
I'm not going to use it all, thank you.
By Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Baudier. All in favor? Any opposed? We have five years.
Just a parish gives you five minutes. And how much, you know, three's kind of short, okay? It is a shame for Wood Materials to hire attorneys to keep this illegal activity on the bachelor in Harahan, which ruins the Harahan residents' quality of life, ruins outdoor activity, endangers health with mold spores, and endangers residents with formosa termites, and lowers property value. Would Pierce Wood, Sarah Woodham, or Jonathan Straw, the operator of the facility, want to live across the street from this facility? Please pray for Harahan attorney Gilbert Bures for wisdom and favor as he represents the residents of Harahan. May the Lord Jesus give the residents of Harahan complete victory over this unlawful activity that greatly affects the Harahan residents' community. As representatives of the residents of Harahan, you are our city attorney, Mr. Bures. We would like to give you this folder with a small amount of public records and pictures and no emails from, to us, or from us, and this box of Harahan residents requesting Wood Materials to shut down mulching and compost and tree dumping that is working illegally on the Harahan bachelor. We set a table in our yard on March 5 and 6, 2016, at 3 Rentpass for Harahan residents to sign individual petitions. Attorney Bures, do you know if the court case on December 6, 2017, at 1 o'clock, is first on the docket?
The court has still not provided me with the docketting notice, so I don't know who my panel is. I do know that it's on September 6, only because I keep track of this case and look it up on the court's website.
Thank you.
So I still don't know where we are on the docket or who the panel is. I'll be happy to receive your documents. This is a record appeal, so the issue involved is whether a three-year prescriptive period or a five-year prescriptive period applies to our action, applies to Harahan's action to stop the mulching activity. Of course, Wood Materials says it's three years, and we're too late. We're saying it's five years. It's an unresolved question of law. The Fifth Circuit will be dealing with a new issue of law. I think we're going to be successful.
I think you will, too.
And if the case does continue, I'll be happy to take the documents and introduce them at the next hearings.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, there's no emails in here from or to us. It's all public record stuff. I just wanted to give it to you, and these things here. And we will be praying for you, Attorney Gilbert Bures.
And look, don't think that judges of the courts of appeal, just because they're listening to lawyers, don't look out in the audience and see people out there because these are elected judges. So by all means, anyone who wants to come to that oral argument, feel free.
Well, it's just kind of hard because people work, and then it's long, and it's long, but we're there, and I just don't want the attorneys to think that we're the only two people complaining, as their attorney said at the last one. But thank you for representing us. Our prayers are with you, that you win, but it would be a really good thing if Wood Materials would withdraw their lawsuit and be a good neighbor and do this. And I think that they should, and I think it would be wise for them to do that. Thank you again, and we will be praying for you highly. And thank you for being willing to take us.
I'm trying to stop it, it just.
That's okay. I'm welcome.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the extra time that you have given to us.
I'm Terry Valenti, 191 Colonial Club Drive. Before I address what our citizens entitled to a point of privilege, I hope that I'll be given more than three minutes to address Mr. Baudier. I will make it brief, but I would like to say to Ms. Whittle, I heard her say that the mayor questioned her intelligence. I was at that meeting. There was no questioning your intelligence, Tracy. She asked you what your qualifications were in reviewing the budgetary process. That meant any training, et cetera. It was not intended, and I don't think anybody thought that she was questioning your intelligence. And Chief.
Can you just adjust the counsel, not the people in the audience?
I am addressing, excuse me, Mr. Johnston, Trudat, really? I am going to address the council regarding the chiefs. One hour tirade. You know, Chief, you can say some things, but to get up here, you know, you've heard this before, you repeat and you repeat and you repeat and you stonewall, and you accuse and you accuse and you accuse. And you have no proof that the mayor stole from you, but you have said it publicly so many times, and I believe the intent is to keep saying it until some people out there believe the mayor has stolen from you. And it's not right. It's not right for the head police officer of our city to stand before its citizens and accuse someone of theft. And I could do the same to you and say that you're stealing from our time by getting up here and taking up an hour, not to say what you need to say, but to repeat and to repeat and to repeat. And to bully one of our paid professionals is inexcusable. It's unprofessional. You should never do that to a city employee. But now I'd like to address Mr. Baudier. He mischaracterized what I wrote. I didn't say, and I have to look back on the video, I did not say that the mayor single-handedly got the ditches cleaned. I said the mayor had been trying to get it done for a while now, and that he was going to get up and take credit for it, and I was right. And I asked Mr. Kirk Talbot about this situation.
Do I have a motion for three more minutes? I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Baudier. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
I asked Mr. Talbot if you had contacted him, and he said yes. And I said, "Had the mayor been working on this before that?" And he said, "I believe she had." So for you to get up and call me, I am a citizen, Mr. Baudier. If you're going to run for mayor of this city, you need to study the laws of what you can accuse a private citizen of. I know you're offended. You have sat there for eight years. For eight years, you have sat here at our government, and you just now, when an election starts coming around, start getting up and coming to this podium and taking time to run for election at our public meetings. And in that statement, you say the mayor is responsible for the time going to midnight. When you just had the police chief take an hour, again, of public time, and you yourself, how do you explain the fact that you don't get up and come around to the podium for eight years? You do it when you're running for office. Run for office on the street. Stop using the citizens' time to do it. And if you mention my name from this meeting publicly again, you better be sure you get every word that you say, that I say, right. I am putting you on notice. If that's a copy of my email, then you, shame on you from this, you could have read it.
I did?
No, you didn't. You said, "I said the mayor single-handedly got the ditches clean." I'm happy the ditches are clean. I'm happy that the election's coming around, so you will get up off of your seat and do something. You sat there when Moscow was running the office, and you never once questioned anything he did. And we did have a deficit, and I believe we had an intentional deficit, and you sat there and allowed it to happen. And these four people are hostile to the mayor because they want her out of office. They want her out of office so bad that they would support someone like you who has done nothing for this city.
You don't know me very well.
You don't have a chance. And the more you get up here and run for public office at this particular podium, which belongs to the people, the more things are going to start coming out about what you did and what you did not do in your eight years. You can't rewrite history. Thank you.
My name is Joe Barber. I live at 188 Wood Lawn. I have a problem with the neighborhood at 184 Wood Lawn. I got some pictures here where their property looked like. They got a bunch of undergrowth here. If somebody would like to look at these pictures. There's a picture of a truck there. The weeds were high underneath there. That truck ain't been moved in five years. They got abandoned vehicles in their backyard. I've talked to Terry Moss about this about five times. I've talked to the mayor about it once. It's been going on for six months. Last year, I made a complaint. They halfway cleaned it up on my side. If you look on the neighbor's side of the fences, it's all cleaned all around it. I'm just having a problem on my side. It's been going on for 25 years. It's time somebody does something about it.
What's your address, one more time, I'm sorry?
Mine's 188. There is 184.
Your 188.
Yeah. The woman that owns the property lives at 4415 South Drive, right off of Newman Street. And now, what can I do to get something done about this?
Well, Mayor, didn't we bring forth an ordinance that was going to move money, I think it was $10,000 from capital?
This woman keeps telling, the owner of the property keeps telling Terry she's going to clean it up. As you can see, that's pictures taken yesterday, and you can see absolutely nothing's getting done. Evidently, this woman knows the system.
Well, Mayor, so the funds that we allotted for conditions like this for blighted, I mean, I believe it was $10,000.
Correct.
So have any of those funds been used to remedy any situations like this?
We have, what we, there are notice requirements that we have to give before you then give them an opportunity to clean up the property. After they have the opportunity, after they receive notice, and I don't want to quote the law because I might not have it just perfect, you have to give them the opportunity to remediate, then you can put a lien, and then we can.
Okay. So have, do you know if any notice has been sent?
All right, this has been going on six months. They've been notified by Terry. In fact, the last time I was over there, about a month ago, I talked to him again, and he said he was going to call the woman because she had somebody cut her grass. And she told Terry that we're going to spray and take care of the property, and you can see what's being done. Absolutely nothing. They're doing this out of spite.
We can, I'll ask you, we can get together Monday, and we can talk about it and.
You want me? No problem.
And we can get together on Monday and talk about it.
Okay.
I have another issue, very, very similar.
You want my number? Oh, wait, contact me?
Please. Spell your last name again.
Barbara, just spell it just like Barbara.
Instead of giving, I'll just give you my phone number. Since everybody in the city has it. I think, thank you, Nicole, very much.
And what would be a good time to call?
Anytime.
Okay, because I'm retired.
If you, would you like to just come to City Hall at 9:30?
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
All right.
I better write that down. And in fact, if you want coffee, I'll take you out to get some coffee if you want. We'll meet here and we'll go and.
Okay, that's good. Not just.
All right. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Tommy Buddy, 7208 Stonely Drive. What I've heard today is that our audited financial statements have material misstatements. For whatever reason, there's at least a question, large question, as to the accuracy of material components. Phil Rebo is a smart guy. He's been doing this a long time. Car Rigs is an excellent firm. I'm surprised with what I've heard today, they're not yanking their financial statements, their audit.
Can't hear you.
I'm surprised that Car Rigs is not yanking their financial statements due to the questions that were raised, until it can be determined as to whether they're materially inaccurate. Failing their doing that, I think the city should ask them to. And I think it falls on the administration to get this information to them in a manner to which they can be confident. Failing in the administration doing it, I think the council members ought to demand that they withdraw those financial statements. I don't know what. I don't know what the law is that been submitted to the state. I don't believe there's any law that would require materially inaccurate statements to become fact just by nature of submitting them to a state agency. So I'd like to think that the city will figure out what they ought to be, and they may be accurate. I don't know that they're inaccurate, but it seems to me there's a huge question as to whether these statements are accurate or not, and that ought to be clarified. Thank you.
My name is Barbara Bonner, and I live at 1079 Colonial Club Drive. And I'm here to address the council about the wastewater treatment plant and the odors that's coming from the plant. I'm sorry, my voice is not real well because of the allergies that attack my throat every day from the wastewater treatment plant. So Mayor Misselli, I wanna thank you for replying to my email and for letting me know that Louisiana DEQ is involved in it. The problem with that is, it's taking time. I've been complaining about this over and over and over again, and something needs to be done. I wake up all hours of the night every day. There was a period of time this year that it got, well, I could walk outside and bring the dog for a walk, go to the playground, have people over, but it's right back to where we were. And I don't know what's going on with Viola. I know they're taking in the Met water from Chalmette. Are they taking in other water? I'd like to know what's in the air that we're breathing. And if there's ever, I know that they have the new tank that y'all installed, or Viola installed on Dickory. Is there additional wastewater that is being held in tanks other than the 5,000 or so a day? So what are those tanks for?
In order to top, we can visit with the site and maybe be more specific to see what you're exactly talking about.
It was the March meeting where you approved them to put in an underground tank?
Oh, they were, it wasn't a tank. I think it was an underwear, underground access for, to have, I'd have to, I don't wanna speak out of turn, and my recollection is that it was a way to go underground in order to deliver the wastewater, but that wastewater hasn't been being delivered lately.
Not at all?
No, ma'am.
So like today, I came home from work, and there's a strong chlorine smell in the air. And it's more of a clean smell today, but there's all kinds of smells. So you're saying there's no water being delivered at all?
And that's why I'm gonna ask you, please, keep telling me, because if anything is going on that we are not being told about, every time you send me an email, I am now including Viola representative, David Frazier from the DEQ, Calvin Hotmeyer. I've had our staff out assessing all the waste, not only just the wastewater treatment plant, but all areas of the city to see if anything else could possibly be going on. So I've told you in the past through our communication, every time you send me information about the time and place, it helps us because I was informed that Mr. David Frazier is now responding to every single problem, every single complaint, in order to go full circle with it. So if there's anything that you see or smell, please report it.
It's time-consuming. It's very time-consuming to do that.
I know.
And it's, it's no fun to not know if you're gonna have some type of event by your house, not knowing what the, the air is gonna smell like. And this has been going on for years. And it's time for Harahan to step up and do something about it.
And we haven't been, we haven't had any deliveries, so not a reason...
Well, then something else is going on. But Viola lies.
Right.
Viola lies. When I first complained, Viola came out to my house, and I know you know this. And they told me, the rep said that it was coming from a dog food processing plant that was next to the Lions Club, which did not exist. Then another time, they come out, and they wanna look in my backyard and look for open, what they call open sewer or manhole covers. They're saying that's what's probably there. And there is none.
And Ms. Bod, that's why I'm not just going to send your complaints or anyone else's complaints just to Viola. It is going straight to the DEQ.
Okay, but I mean, I wanna say right now too, that Scott Patterson or Peterson, however you say his name with Viola, I've talked to him. He's assured me that, he assured me over and over that the smell was not coming from the plant. And then he came to the March meeting, and he admitted that the smell was so bad. And so I just don't understand how you keep using Viola when they lie. They lie to the citizens, they lie to you, and I have a hard time with that. It's been going on too long. I'm living it every day. So thank you for whatever you can do.
Ugh, it's been a long night. Can everybody hear me okay? Back there too? All right. I am on the Police Commission to evaluate the, I guess, the condition, the current condition, fiscal and preparedness for the police department. And I took the opportunity, even though the commission hasn't been fully filled yet, there's still one seat, I think, missing, correct?
Yes.
All right. But I took the opportunity to go do a ride-along and see what actually happens out there on the street with the Harahan Police Department. And let me tell you, my eyes were opened widely. From what I can see and what I've seen as a very, very preliminary assessment, they are currently understaffed because you have three administrators that are not beat cops right off the top. Take, take those off of the top. And then what you have left, you have folks that are now out, you have somebody who's currently on, on military deployment, you have a gentleman who's out sick, you have other attrition such that the folks that are actually on the street are very, very limited. And as a Harahan resident, by itself, that, that concerns me. So to the council, and this is why I'm up here, for address the council, I'm addressing you to say, please, review the chief's budget very, very carefully because he needs more money to put more people on that street. He needs it. He's gotta have it. And Harahan is fantastic and wonderful and great. One of the reasons is because it's so safe. And that comes from that man. So I wasn't here for the earlier discussion, and I apologize for that, but from my ride-along and what I have seen, there is no budget items for things like retiring and recycling bulletproof vests. And the officers only go shooting once a year, one time, and they're only allowed a few bullets. I don't know about you guys, but I would like to see police officers that train every month, at least once a month, so that they are very comfortable with firearms around my kids. They train once a year. I'm asking you guys, when you review his budget, look at things like that. Put the money into his budget so he can do the training. He can send people out for training if they need it. He can get the bulletproof vests if he needs them. Cars, men, and material. He needs it all. And that was off of one ride-along. I worry what I'm gonna find at the end of this journey as I work through the commission. And I would also ask this council, please appoint the next person. We need to get to work, and we can't do that without all the seats filled. It's an easy request, and hopefully, we can all work together to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the last meeting, Tim Bodie, you got up and you said that the entire council was working for the citizens of Harahan. I totally disagree. I've had a lot of people tell me that they are totally disgusted with the council because of the hostility. People have sold their houses and moved out. I have had people tell me that they were gonna put their properties up for sale because of this. That's horrible. Second off, how can you say the council is working for the citizens when the council has stolen from the citizens in the city by taking health insurance and not paying it back? You know what that is? That's malfeasance in office. And lastly, I wanna know, what are you all planning to do about the sewage problem, the pumps? If we end up losing sewage because you all don't vote for it, I will be the first one to hit up a class action lawsuit against each of you all personally that vote against having it fixed.
Ms. Rhonda, I have signed a con, a contract in order to get the design, an emergency design to have the situation taken care of. The design does take some time, however, so we're moving in the direction of trying to get it alleviated as fast as possible and get the work designed so we can get boots on the ground to get it fixed as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, here I ask for, with last thing, I forgot. On the August 5th storm event, the pumps weren't working. Is there a reason that they aren't working? I mean, a lot of people shot at this thing on my street, it looked like a river just flowing down, and I took my mom to the door that night, and the streets in Harahan, really, I mean, what, isn't it bad?
Our problem in the city of Harahan has to do with years and years of lacking to upgrade our subsurface drainage. The pipes underneath our streets to carry the water to the canals are too small. So even having the pumps on, we can't get the water there to the SCADA system so that it's like a thermometer. It hits a certain level fast enough, we're gonna have water that sits in it and accumulates in the streets until we start doing drainage projects. So that's why I'm very happy that we have now some money and capital funds. We just have to be able to have that money allocated. And most of the money were stripped out of the capital projects.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
Robert Johnson, 6735 Riverside Drive. There was a lot of discussion about the audited financials. I am curious if they're on the website. I looked a couple days ago. I did not locate them. If they're not on the website, I would ask that they put, be placed on the city of Harahan website. Secondly, when things are placed on the city of Harahan website, they're typically in a PDF file. There are different formats of PDF files. There are what are called searchable PDF files, and then there's others that, really, it just brings up an image of the whole page. And if you wanna find a word, you can't use a find technique to find a word. And given that these audited financials are apparently 130 pages in length, if I wanted to find every instance of the word "police" to follow it through the audit and trace what was happening, it makes it very difficult. So I would ask that the administration look into the possibility of using searchable PDFs for files which it places on its website. The final, maybe the final, the final, maybe the final thing I wanna bring up is, is I wanna restate what Ms. Ream said about the court hearing regarding the mulchings. It is an appeals court hearing. It is at the Louisiana Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals. That is in downtown Gretna. It's not in the main court building that you see. It's kind of across the street from that. Its address is 101 Derbyknee. I probably mispronounced it. The time is September 6th. It's in courtroom B. It's scheduled to begin at 1 o'clock, but the way these things are, sometimes they schedule three or four groups of matters to be heard by the court, and it could be that they're second or third. They may be first. It may go off at 1:00. It may go off at 2:00. But if you don't have anything and wanna see another vision of city government, I encourage you to come. It will show support for the city and support for Attorney Bures in his fight for the city against wood. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, thank you. And I'd also like to expand on Mr. Johnson and City Attorney Bures's comments. The more people we have in the seats, September 6th, the bigger message we will be sending to the judges that are hearing the case. So anyone who can make it, we would appreciate your support. We emphatically ask that, that everybody attend. I think having a number of residents, our officials, et cetera, there would be very, very impressive to, to the, to the court. Also, I, I wanna thank City Attorney Bures for all his hard work. I think his defense of the system, of the city, has pushed wood materials to finishing that permit that we've been pushing on for them to get for what, Ms. Ream, for a year and a half, two years now, in order to move the Hall Road and for them to be the neighbor that we expect. So, thank you, and go on.
Good evening. My name is Bill Barnett. I live at 249 Carolyn Drive, Harahan, and have lived there with my wife and children when they were younger for over 40 years. We built our house there as part of eight-house subdivision, really, that was put in in 1976, '77. We specifically moved in Harahan, in that place, for two reasons. Number one, we have been very fortunate, knowing a little something about the geography. We made sure we won the high ground from the river. And in all these 40 years, we've never taken, never, not once, taken a drop of water in our house. So I thank God for that, okay? The other reason we moved there, this was brought out by Councilman Bodie earlier when he said, Harahan is a wonderful little community. I'm paraphrasing what you said, with, that is family-oriented. It's peaceful and quiet and safe, and that, I think you referred to us as a bedroom community. I believe that was your exact word, or term, bedroom community. Now, I'm in a position after 40 years there, well, just over 40 years, of seeing that the property at the corner of my street and the highway is looking to be redeveloped in, in terms of its usage. And that requires a zoning change. And I must tell you that I personally am absolutely, 100%, totally opposed to that. On one hand, we hear, I mean, you know, frankly, I make my living as an economist, a professional economist, been doing it for over 40 years. I have consulted for some big firms like Chevron and things like that. So I have a little knowledge of this, and usually, when you wanna know what's going on, as they say, follow the money, okay? So I look at that and I say, now, why would somebody wanna change the zoning down there on that property? And the answer is, because some people who are involved in that expect to be better off financially. And there are some who say, yes, and it will be good for the city because the city will get more sales tax right now. On the other hand, I can assure you that if this change becomes, you know...
Pardon me, can I have a motion to extend time three minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Bodie. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
We have ayes, you're nays. We have five yeas, zero nays. Motion passes.
Um, so, uh, I can assure you that if this passes, and I'm sure I won't be the only one, but I know I will be for sure, knocking on the assessor's door, asking to have my property reassessed at a lower value. Because that, changing that zoning at the end of the block is going to cause all kind of problems for us. It may, may cause dr- uh, drainage and storage problems. I don't know about that, but it's certainly going to cause traffic problems, safety problems, uh, parking problems, and all kinds of things like that. That's going to lower the value of my property. So maybe the city picks up a little sales tax on one hand and loses property tax on the other hand, because everybody around there goes to the assessor and says, hey, I want my assessment changed. I want it lowered. And we all know how the assessor's office works with something like that. So, um, the assessor is quite likely, uh, to say, yeah, you know, look, and I like, you know, I'm an elected official and these people have a cause and so we'll do that and we'll reduce their assessment. That's one thing. And then, uh, the other thing I hear is that, well, we're going to get property tax revenue in from this. But I, for one, and I don't know if you all, have seen a business plan that says, well, here's how much property tax we expect to pay. You know, you do a business plan, you, you put what you expect your revenues to be and what the sources are and all that, and what your expenses are expected to be. And certainly, one of the expenses is property tax. But you have to, you know, justify that. And I'm wondering if any of you on the council has seen anything that would indicate how the amount of expected increase in, uh, sales tax revenue is to be generated. But how much are we talking about? Anybody have any idea? Have they, have the people who want to change presented anything to you? Do you have any facts on that at all? So I have heard that that's a big, important reason for Harahan to change this zoning because of the tax revenue, and yet, we don't have any idea of what it might do. And remember, whatever they put in is just speculative. So that's a, a, a very, very big concern to me. And I mean, I have, there are plenty others. I'm just going to, uh, mention, uh, one more right now, which is perhaps the most important and, oh, well, two more right now. One, which is very important, the other, which is perhaps the most important. Um, the, the first of these latter two, last two, um, is that, um, the, uh, once the zoning is changed-
I have a motion by Councilman Bodier to for three more minutes. Seconded by-
Second.
Councilman Johnson, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five yeas, zero nays. Motion passes.
Thank you. Um, once the zoning is changed, that's it. That's done, okay? And so if the restaurant that is proposed for that place fails, certainly the property owner isn't going to say, well, that failed, that's it, I'm walking away from this, I'll just pay my property taxes every year and not try and do anything with it. Well, once it's changed, anything that is legal under C one, and I'm going to come to that in a second, anything that's legal under C one could be done, provided they meet the building codes and that kind of thing. Well, that, that, that's kind of hard to swallow when you've been there forty years plus. And if we're going to change that down there, and by the way, if it doesn't work the way we thought, God only knows what's going to end up down there, okay? That, that, that's pretty hard to swallow. I don't think any one of you would want to have to swallow something like that in your neighborhood. And then finally, when this proposal was put to the council last time, it said C two. This time, it said C one. Now, there are any, in my opinion, okay, and I have to admit, it's, it's been a long time since I gave up my license to practice law, okay? But I have to admit that it looks to me like there are any number of procedural problems that have happened with respect to this. And so if this thing, some kind of way, passes the council and if the, whether the mayor approves it or if the mayor vetoes it and then it, uh, passes over a veto, I can assure you there's going to be a lawsuit. Absolutely assure you there will be a lawsuit. And it's going to cost Harahan money to defend against the lawsuit, okay? And what is going to be the basis of lawsuit? That this zoning change was done, okay, in the face of the law. It did not comply with the law, or laws. This is ridiculous, okay? It, it is ridiculous, in my opinion. I would urge each and every one of you when this comes up to vote to oppose this for the benefit of Harahan as a whole, but in particular, for the benefit of my nice, peaceful, quiet, safe neighborhood, which is what you were talking about with respect to your children. Not my children now, my grandchildren, okay? So I have five that are around here, three on this side of the lake, two on the other, but they're always over at our house. And they're just getting to the age where they can go out and play instead of in my backyard, play out in the street, you know, in the front yards and all that. Nice, peaceful, safe, quiet. Not a restaurant on the end with trucks coming in, making deliveries, not with parking problems and all that. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Barnett, Mr. Barnett, Barnett, I'm sorry, Mr. Barnett. I wanted to tell you that this is an issue dear to my heart about advertising of what's on our agenda. And so that people in this city will know what is coming up. We put proposed ordinances on the agenda so that they can lay over for a month, and then, when it's up for a vote, it becomes, uh, it moves off from first reading to be a vote. I would like to make sure that all proposed ordinances that are up for first reading and are up for vote and resolutions are on the agenda that is advertised and in the notice, so that people can have that entire month to see what's contemplated. And I agree with you that that title shouldn't be changed because it did go from C two to C one.
And my question to the council courses and to the city attorney is, is that legal to say at the last meeting where we were here, say, well, what we're looking at is C two, and they're all coming in and saying, well, we're not really looking at C two, we're looking at C one? Is it different?
Because the title changed. Thank you.
My name is Herb Swallow, and I live at two twenty-six Carolyn Drive, almost across the street from, uh, this property. And my concern is, as Bill said, uh, traffic is one. It's because we, now, in the afternoon at five o'clock and in the morning, uh, when people are going to work and kids are going to school, uh, there's a lot of traffic on Jefferson Highway. And I've, personally, I've had to wait for several minutes a lot of times just to get across, uh, Jefferson Highway or get on Jefferson. Now, when this restaurant is built, you're going to, at five o'clock in the afternoon, you're going to have people coming into the restaurant, and they're going to be coming from Kenner, and they're going to turn left, they're going to have to go make a U-turn, and then turn left and come back and turn right into the restaurant. If that doesn't cause a problem, I don't know what is. We've had several accidents already at that guy intersection. So we expect to have way many more when we have tra- a lot of traffic. Now, this restaurant, we're talking about not having enough parking. Uh, you're not going to have enough parking, and, uh, their busiest part of the week will probably be on Saturday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And of course, they may have a, a wedding reception or whatever on Saturday and Sunday. And that's the days when most of the people in our block, uh, most of us have got five and six kids, children, so they have, now, we're looking at grandkids, I'm looking at great-grandkids. And that's the time that they come in to see, to see me at home is during that time. And of course, uh, you can't, you have trouble parking, parking when there's three or four of them coming at my house, and three or four come across the street at Don's house, and down the street at the Pfeiffer's and whatever. And so they're not going to be able to park on Carolyn Drive, so they're going to have to find some other place, and I don't know where else, what else they can do. Parking on the highway, especially in the weekdays, the children from both ends of the, of the spectrum are walking from Harahan Elementary, St. Rita's School, they're walking on, on the side of the, the highway, getting home, going to the snowball stand, uh, doing whatever they have to do, but there's always children walking up and down every afternoon and every morning. So that's going to cause a problem. Now, we already have one restaurant, I'll say restaurant, it's a coffee shop next door to them that's already built it up. So now, I'm told, they're going to have a drive-in, uh, Zachary shop placed there. Now, you have, you have one restaurant on, just on past the school-
I'm motion for three more minutes.
Second.
That is serving-
I have a motion for three more minutes by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Bennett. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have five yeas, zero nays. Motion is granted.
You have, uh, this place is closed and the Zachary shops go open, so they're going to be selling alcohol. You got the, the store next door to them that's selling alcohol, kind of packaged liquor store and whatever, they sell everything. And then you got, if you go down the street, past the school, you've got, uh, the restaurant there that also has alcohol license. So we have, and then we got to go to the other end of the block, and you got another Italian restaurant, and they sell alcohol there. Now, everybody says, well, if it's, if it's a restaurant, it's not like a bar. Well, it's not. Except that if you have a bar in there, and I'm sure this restaurant will have a bar, then people just stay at the, at the bar and drink and they parked in your front yard and they, they cause a lot of problems and probably, a lot of people will be intoxicated when they come in, come back. So we are, we are setting a precedent, we're building restaurants all the way down the street. We got two and a half, uh, in a two and a half block area, we're going to have about five different places to serve food. How many places do we need? Number one, I don't think, uh, the, most of the people Harahan are not, are not the big type, uh, restaurant, uh, people. I'm not. I go to, I go to restaurants to eat often, but I don't go to places like that. If I did, I'd go downtown New Orleans and go to the, to the restaurant in New Orleans. But I, I don't go to the, the high-priced restaurants. I save my money and, and do something else. After all, most of our community is retired. And I've been on that street for six, six years, so I've, I've got my route planned pretty well. So I would expect, I would certainly like to look at every one of you and, and face to face and say, hey, if that was your, if I, if you were living in my house, would you want that restaurant there? I don't think so. I don't think so. Because it's going to cause more problems than we even, even discussing here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swallow. Just can't come up to light.
I just, I just have one question. About a half point, it's about your agenda. About a half pointed out to me that it says this, uh, for these lots, it's a proposed ordinance this time, then it's not up for approval, according to the agenda.
It's not up for approval.
Yeah, it's up for, it's up for approval.
But we're not approving it. You didn't go to plan a zoning, right?
Right, didn't go to plan a zoning.
It hasn't gone to plan an enzoning yet, so we can't vote on it tonight, sir.
So you're not going to vote on it?
Yes, sir.
It is technically, but-
Shouldn't be.
Hello, Representative Talbot. For everybody, this is Representative Talbot.
Thank you.
How are you?
Mayor, members of the council, Chief Walker, Chief St. Sierra, I'll be brief, I know, I know it's late. Um, we're not in session right now. We go into session March twelfth, um, which is a, a non-fiscal session, so your taxes cannot be raised. We can't ta- address taxes in a, in a, in a non-fiscal session. Um, real quick, we've been getting, um, several complaints about erratic mail delivery by the US Post Office. If you have that problem, please give me a call at seven three six, seven two nine nine, and we will pass that on to the, to the, uh, the proper people. But we have had several, um, complaints about that, especially in Harahan, some in River Ridge, but it seems like there's more in Harahan than, than River Ridge.
And if anybody wants to just send that to the city, we'll forward it to, uh, the representative via email.
Okay. And if anybody has a question, I'd, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you for your help on Jefferson Highway. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and, and your officials deserve the praise, and DOTD worked, uh, came out there very quickly, and, and you know, those are our tax dollars. That's what their job is, and, and, and you know, we all pay for that, so it's, um, something that, uh, that's what we pay for.
And I've also asked, you know, we, we've had a lot of communications through the years trying to get, um, different ditches cleaned out, so thank you. Um, I've also asked that we look at Hickory, um, again, because especially with this, this heavy rain we've been having and their open ditches, there's a lot of trash that just automatically floats into those ditches, as you well know. So all of them are, uh, addressed.
Right. And thank you for your, your help, and, and Mr. Bodier, thank you for your, for your phone call as well about that. And, um, I know I probably don't say this enough, but I'm very proud to represent Harahan and Baton Rouge, and it, it's been a pleasure, and I, I look forward to the, for the next couple of years.
Thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rena Sanders, Oak Avenue. Um, I take my little grandson all the time to Zorang Park right there, and, uh, right across the street from Kazz's. And, um, I'm a little bit worried-
I can't really hear you.
Oh. I'm a little bit worried about that business that's opening up where, um, it used to be Bailey's Cafe, it was a laundromat, it was apartment buildings on the top. Um, geez, you know, they're going to have that area that they sit out there, you know, at tables and all that kind of stuff. And, um, since some kind of way, it was allowed to go almost all the way out to the street. I would hope that y'all are going to alert people that are going to try to sit out there to eat or drink or whatever. That is going to be such a dangerous corner, and I, I just can't imagine that it's okay to, to do what they did there. And I, I've seen a couple of times, because the baby likes to sit out there and watch the cars and the trucks go by, and I'm worried about it because growing up on Oak Street for sixty-four years, you know, and being at the little park all the time, there was always wrecks around that corner on Hickory as well as on Oak Street. And, um, the people coming out of Elmwood use the old Army Road for everything. I mean, I use it every time I go to Elmwood when I'm coming back, but, you know, I try not to even let the baby sit out there and watch the trucks because I'm so afraid that somebody's going to miss the turn. And it's just a really, really dangerous situation, and I hope that y'all are kind of looking into it or some, because it just seems really dangerous, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sanders, um, I did the, um, Mr. Steve Brockett with Regulatory Department, um, did look into it. Our zoning laws do allow for that building. DOTD was brought in. I would like to, um, petition this council to consider amending our zoning ordinance so that, uh, we can adjust, so that, that kind of building on the property line or that close to the property line in that situation for that, uh, zoning can be changed so that in the future we can, we can make it better. Thank you.
Nicole Lee, City Clerk. Um, in regards to the mayor's statement, Nicole, the clerk, always says we accept funds by resolution, not ordinance. Um, I was appointed as clerk, uh, to the clerk position in January of twenty twelve, and at that time, um, when we requested fu- we respectfully requested funds from Councilman Paul Johnston, District Two, um, in resolutions, we never accepted funds. We, we requested funds. Y'all started accepting funds in twenty sixteen, so please stop putting words in my mouth. That, that's not what I said. I have an email here, and I have a few, um, from Linda Lulu. Uh, we need the fol- the following items prepared and added to the agenda. A resolution to accept funds, number one. Number two, a resolution to accept funds. Okay? We, um, requested, uh, funds. We didn't accept. We didn't accept through resolution. So, just to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Walker, Harahan Police Chief. Does anybody ask about the audit? You can go on the website of Louisiana Legislative Auditor and they have all of the audits, including this 2016 audit of the city of Harahan. You can download it or review it on there. In response to Mayor Mazzelli, everything that I said tonight, I can document. If anybody wants to come see the documentation, they're welcome to come by the police station any day during the week and I'll be more than happy. I didn't change the figures in the audit, the auditor did. I went from under budget, over budget, under budget, under budget. Emails from the city finance director, under budget. Something I didn't create, I'm just giving factual information. Thank you.
I want to respond to Mr. Baudier. He insinuated that the mayor and I were solely responsible for the large increase in sewer...
Excuse me, can we have quiet in the chambers?
He insinuated that the mayor and I were solely responsible for the large increase in sewerage fees. I have to remind him that this council unanimously approved those fees in order to come into compliance with the DEQ loan covenants. And I also have to remind Mr. Baudier that this loan was originated under his administration with Mayor Masca and he voted for the original loan with those covenants and then decided not to honor those covenants, which is similar to buying a house with certain interest rate, payment rate, and deciding that you don't want to do that. You don't want to pay that rate, you don't want to pay that interest rate, you're not going to pay that, that monthly note. When Mr. Baudier first decided to try to decrease or reduce the new sewer fees that we unanimously approved... Wait, just one second. I complimented him in an email and asked him then to please run his numbers by the DEQ to make sure that we were in compliance. Mr. Baudier did not do that. And so, yes, he's correct. I voted against his ordinance that reduced those fees for two reasons. One, his new numbers eliminated the repair of Lift Station Six. I felt that with residents having raw sewerage backing up into their homes and yards, that was not fair to them. I also voted against it because Mr. Baudier never confirmed with the DEQ that those, that his new numbers kept us in compliance with the loan. And I felt like I was doing a better service by voting against his ordinance. If he had come up with numbers that realistically reduced the sewerage fees, I would have been happy to, to vote for that. And for him to imply otherwise is disingenuous. And the other thing I wanted to say is, I'm confused about the wood material mulching and composting because at the last meeting, I thought we celebrated because Mr. Baudier had orchestrated a deal that they were going to move all of that to the Jefferson Parish side of their property. Apparently, that didn't happen because now we're back talking about that again. That's all I have to say.
Well, I'd like to respond because that's not, not what I said about the compost and mulching. I didn't discuss the compost and mulching because it's under, it's in court right now. What I was talking about clearly was the Hall Road and that was the moving of the Hall Road to the back of the, I actually have the emails. I will copy and send you the emails. And we were talking about the Hall Road being moved to the back. And as far as the sewer fees go, I actually worked with Mayor Mazzelli's staff and we found a way to get everything done that we needed, that we, where we fell in compliance with the, for the DEQ.
No. You told Mayor Mazzelli's staff what to do. No, 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 wait, 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 wait.
You had to eliminate, you had to eliminate the repair of Lift Station Six in order to make your numbers.
Just real quick and we're going to move on real quick. There was a meeting that I was present, Councilman Baudier was present, Bobby Moss was present, Kevin Hotmire was present, Linda Lulu was present, and I believe Mr. Tommy Buddy was present. Here at City Hall, we probably sat for about two or three hours trying to figure a way to reduce those fees. Those figures came at the guidance of the individuals that were at that meeting. We sat there and said, what can we do to reduce fees? And Mr. Hotmire said himself, well, we could do this. So, I just want to let you know that a lot of people...
Okay, so, wait, why did those numbers ever, never get run by DEQ for approval? When you promised you were going to do that and you never did?
The numbers have to absolutely be approved by DEQ. Or we would be out of compliance. We are in compliance.
We are not, this is, we have gone astray on Address the Council.
All right. Just a matter, are we not in compliance or are we in compliance?
We don't know.
We don't know. But you, if we weren't in compliance, do you think DEQ would be here and screaming?
No. They will sign...
Every year, they will send a packet for us to fill out. According to... That packet, we'll submit the numbers and that'll be it.
Sue, if I am not in compliance, then I will, I will step in back, back and say yes.
I just want to say one more...
Listen, I can own it. When I'm wrong, I'll own it. I promise you I will.
I just want to say one more thing. So, when that whole situation was voted on, you said, well, I know we're going to have to increase fees again probably in January. And Councilman Hewitt said, and the DEQ man, the representative said, well, you know, you won't know until November unless you get a phone call. And Councilman Hewitt says, well, I just hope they don't call or hope they don't notice or something like that. Because you both knew that those numbers were not in compliance and had not been approved by the DEQ.
DEQ doesn't have to approve the numbers, number one. The numbers that the administration put to the council and the citizens was three times the minimum needed to comply.
You've already called that Address the Council.
Well, I was addressed, I was addressed. My name was addressed. The numbers that put forth to the council were three times, were three times what was needed.
He's already addressed the council.
We were misled, the administration lied to me as citizens.
Of course. We will now close Address the Council. Approval of the minutes? Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yays, zero nays. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting on July 27.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Benton. All in favor?
Yes.
Yay.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I have Ms. Hewitt?
Yay.
I have three yays, two nays. The minutes are approved. Very good. Communications?
The Board of Adjustments and Appeals did not meet in July and the Planning and Zoning Board did not meet in August.
Resolutions? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess for the restroom. Thank you.